Call the meeting to order for the Grand Forks County Commission, December 20th. Start with the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It appears all the commissioners are here right now except for Mark. And I just talked to everyone this morning, so. We, uh, we will move on. Everybody get a opportunity to look at the minutes from the previous meeting. Have a motion to approve. Motion by Commissioner Peach, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Hagan. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All same sign. Approval of the agenda.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Peach.
I would like to add one item to the agenda. Under the beer and liquor licenses, we recently got one in, so it didn't make it on the agenda for the country club. Liquor license, so I'd like to add that probably under D, the third one.
Yeah.
To the agenda.
Right.
Go ahead. If we're gonna, we usually approve the consented agenda all at once. Shouldn't we take this one separately? I mean, we have a chance to see it.
True, there is a copy of it on our desk.
Yeah.
So we could do it separately or?
Well, maybe we can talk about it before we approve the consent agenda.
Okay, which is then, uh.
I just, for real.
Okay, we can, I can, you're going. I mean, two things here, so, very good, okay. Alright, so approval of the order of agenda, do I have a motion?
Oh, sorry, we have, we have a motion to add, but did we have a second?
No, we did not.
I made the motion to add.
Uh, second, didn't you?
I did the approval of minutes.
Minutes.
Also. They got it from one of us.
Alright. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All same sign. Motion is carried. Alright. Approval of the consent agenda.
Mr. Chairman. The order of agenda, you just add it unless you, the motion was to add.
Okay, so I need an approval for the order of agenda.
I'll move that approval.
Okay, second, anybody? Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same side, motion carried. The consent agenda. Does anybody want anything pulled out of that at all?
Mr. Chair. Commissioner Hagan, just the item that they've added, perhaps we can take a moment to look at that.
Okay. Take a few minutes if you want to talk to it or look at it. Grand Fork Country Club.
This is a continuation.
Get from it here.
Yep.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Peach.
I would move approval of the consent agenda.
To include the country clubs?
Yes, to include the country club liquor license.
Okay, do I have a second? Second by Commissioner Hagan, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carried. Aim of chance permit, okay, that's, okay, that's all that stuff. Alright. County board appointments.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, we have two applicants for the Grand Forks County Human Service Board.
Okay.
Those two members are currently serving and they would like another term. They, we have advertised Grand Forks Carroll both in the streets and in the legals. And advertised four times, we did also give the applications to members that are currently serving. So those two are the only two that applied and it's Jonel Baki and Jill. Ormea. Ormea. Jonel Baki.
Okay.
And, and so they are currently serving and they would like another term and no one else has applied, there are two openings.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve those two appointments?
We need to have separate together.
Yes.
I would make that motion.
Okay, I have a second. Second by Commissioner Hagan. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The next one is the Public Safety Answering Point Board. Only one applied and, uh, and is currently serving and no one else applied.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve EC Inman for public service answering point? Okay, Commissioner Hagan, motion second. Second by Commissioner Peach, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All same sign, motion is carried. Grand Forks County Water Source Board Resource Board.
There are two openings. Water Board Manager would like to recommend Tom Durkin and Jane Peter, Heater, to the board. And, but there were others that also applied and.
In fact.
So Tom Durkin. And, um, Ashley Sondrol. And Dave Flitter.
Okay.
Were the, the four applicants that applied for the, for the two spots.
Okay, and we did get a recommendation from the water board?
You did.
Tom, Tom Durkin and who else?
And James.
James Hyder.
Hyder.
Okay.
That came from Mr. Axby.
That came from, carry the secretary.
Okay, alright.
Okay. What's the wishes of the board? Commissioner Peach.
Since this was a recommendation from the water board, I would move that Tom Durkin and James Hyder should be placed on the water board.
Okay, do I have a second to that motion?
I'll second it for purposes of discussion.
Okay, Commissioner Hagan, seconds, go ahead, Commissioner Hagan.
Well, this is one of those situations where we get just these few pages, we don't know anything about anybody yet. And the, when we just take that recommendation, the water board is then deciding what we do. Who are, it's kind of puts us in a position of, how should we go about this? What I would like is either to have more of an opportunity to, to talk to these applicants in contested situations like this. Or the water board or the weed board or whichever board it is. Give us not just two names or a name, but some reasoning behind it. How did you pick this out of the four people? There were two other candidates here, one of them had a very extensive resume, including being a master sergeant in the air force. I would like to know a little more about people because once, once you guys get on the water board, you can't get off because nobody will let you get off. You guys know that. So it's a long-term appoint, not, you have to get reappointed, but it's a long-term service quite often. So.
I agree with that. I agree with that because I, I mean, looking at their applications, they can put it on paper, but I don't know who they are. The only person that reached out to me was Mr. Sondrol, he called me and talked to me. And I, and which showed, which showed me that he has some ambitions to be on it, so, I mean.
And, and we don't really want to be personally individually lobbied by everybody, but it would be nice to know more about this. Our job is to meet the right people, we rely on the boards to present the right people. But I still feel uncomfortable when I don't know who they are. So, to do it in one meeting, not like we need to add to our agendas, but to do it in just one meeting or without a committee talking to people. Just, these are important boards, the, the water board, I wouldn't be on the water board in a bed, you have to work too hard. You know, look at you doing all this. It is a lot of responsibility, it's a big colony. So, I mean, that's just my, my discussion points, I guess we have to vote or, or, I don't think we change procedure or not, but.
We can't delay it either, can we?
It, it needs to be done by January 1st, so we can have a special meeting.
That's hard during the holidays too.
But is there a way, Mr. Chair, maybe not for this discussion point, but in the future? Is there a way that we can look to the water board, maybe have them interviewed a little bit or meet the four candidates, have some select questions? I know probably the water board themselves have, have probably got some in-depth discussions with the, the members. And I certainly respect the recommendations, but in the future, maybe we could put something both for the weed board, the water board. And PSAP, whoever, if there were more than, than a number of applicants, sometimes we run into, we've got more positions open than candidates. And so to see the fact that there is more of an interest is a good thing. But I think that if we could lengthen the process or do something just to be a little bit more inclusive. And no disrespect to anybody who serves on those boards, but that we could feel confident about the decisions that we are making as a commission.
And I remember before, before I was even on the commission, this issue came up before. And we were looking for recommendations from current board members. For people that had applied for those positions, to see what their qualifications were and to make a recommendation to the board. So, that's how this all came about. So.
Can we ask, continue that water board members want to speak to us? Maybe they do, maybe they don't.
Any of you want to speak in?
Yeah, on the water board. Jim, Jim Farrell.
Okay.
And I'm currently on the water board. I guess our, our thinking was partially was location of our applicants. Tom covers, we each try and as, take a certain part of the colony.
Sure.
And Tom's area is, is mostly to the north and somewhat west up to the Gilby country and Gangster.
Okay.
We need somebody there and Jim is, is to the west of there basically. And my personally, my, my, I like their farming backgrounds and. I guess that was my main idea on nominating these two people.
Okay. Anybody else wants to speak?
My, my recommendation is based on the decisions of the board. So. There is a, there is a time commitment to this job, that job. And they're both retired or semi-retired and that was, and I'm not speaking against any of the other ones, but. We're afraid that like Austin wouldn't have the time or whatever to commit to, to all the time for this job and, and be in the, at all the meetings. I think he's the candidate, but I don't think his, his time commitment is there or can be.
Anybody else?
Well, my name is Tom Purdue, I'm the chairman of water board. I echo what Mr. Farrell just said, as far as Mr. Flitter's. Application, he does not have a farming background. He does have experience in a lot of other functions. That. Go well. So, but the board's decision was these two gentlemen here.
Well, I mean, this decision needs to be. If, if we want to change how we do things, then we probably should do that in the future. But I think for right now, we should probably go with the recommendations of the water board and, and go from there. So, right now, there is a motion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion is carried.
You're Austin members of the commission. I have before you, you should have gotten a staff report from me with some background and the requests that I have before you today. So, I'm Michael Doolittle, I'm the open response project coordinator for the people who are doing on the, on the commission, welcome. So I've been in this role since November of 2017, so over five years now. And we've been operating primarily under two grants, the state targeted response grant was the first grant that we received that funded both my physician and our opioid response activities. And then we transitioned to the state opioid response grant, which continues to fund our activities and should still fund them for probably the next couple of years or so. So as, as the federal funds, these are federal funds passed to the state to our health department. As these funds have been out longer, there's been more restrictions placed on funds. And so some of the programming and stuff that we started out with early on has gotten a little bit more restrictive. Where there's bigger reporting requirements or there's restrictions on how funds can be, can be used. So right now I have two programs that I have restrictions on how funds can be used. The first one is a grant program that I have through Inspire Pharmacy and Third Street Clinic. So Third Street Clinic was receiving a lot of requests for help with, with medications for addiction treatment. So the three FDA approved medications that can help treat opioid addiction that are primarily, the prescriptions are primarily coming from Spectra Health. Who's been our great partner in getting, bringing that service to our community. And they go across the street to Inspire Pharmacy and Third Street Clinic and Inspire Pharmacy are kind of closely tied together. So Third Street Clinic was getting a lot of requests for these medications, it was harming their budget. And so we got together with them and we started paying for the individuals who were requesting help with their medications for addiction treatment. And we've been running a program like this for approximately two to three years. And it averages around a thousand dollars a month that we spend on it. So you're a pretty small piece of the pie, but it, it can be a huge help to the people who are accessing the program. The problem is, is the federal government says that anybody who receives help with medications for addiction treatment from a federal grant has to have this, you know, this reporting mechanism done called the GIPRA. And that takes hours to complete and makes it really hard for us to be able to spend money on this through our grant. You know, it's kind of defeating the, the whole purpose. And then the other program is our served service program, so our served service program has been around since the fall of 2019. And it provides, you know, it, it has three goals, you know, reducing the incidence of hepatitis C in the community. Reducing the incidence of overdose in the community as well as providing positive connections to people who use drugs. And so that program has been around for a little over three years now. And we've been achieving some of our goals, such as increasing the amount of meloxicillin in the hands of the people who are most likely to use it in our community. Reducing the number of overdoses that are reaching the emergency department as well as reducing the amount of hepatitis C in the community as, as well. So we are reaching some of our goals on that. The challenge with the served service program is we can't use, you know, we can't use federal funding, we can't use state funding. And, you know, in reality, I would feel bad asking for any type of your local taxpayer funding as well. So that's where the, that's where this request comes in, the county has received some funds to help with the opioid settlement that you guys entered into. These funds, part of these funds, the goal of these funds is TV use for remediation. And we have two programs that are helping with remediation of the, of the opioid epidemic. And so I'm seeking eight thousand dollars that can be used for the MAT gap payment program. And then four thousand dollars that would be used for our served service program for the supplies for that program. And then that would be complimentary to our over three hundred thousand dollars worth of grant funds that we are up to getting right now. And kind of complements our entire package of opioid response activities in the community. I have additional data if you need it, and I'd be happy to say if there are any questions, you know, I'm kind of reading through, you know, some of the topics, so.
Okay, I guess one question I would add is, if there's twelve thousand, and I think this is a good idea, use this twelve thousand dollars if you're requesting. What else would it have been used for, or if you couldn't use it for this, is something else, is it coming away from something else or not?
Commissioner Hagan, I did speak with State's Attorney Lamstead about how to use the funds. Initially, they, you know, the, the attorney that was, that, the state's attorney has been working with, they advised to be careful initially in how you're spending the funds. And it's, you know, kind of indicated to point towards the remediation uses. There would be other things that we could be using for remediation, but these are the, these are two items that would be hard to use otherwise. Within the kind of lists of remediation options that wouldn't be kind of duplicated by what we could use federal funding for.
Yes.
Commissioner Hagan, members of the board, what Mr. Doolittle shared is correct. I have had a number of conversations with our counsel on the opioid litigation matter. This isn't appropriate use of these funds. At one point in time, and maybe still, there's the option to, the, the state cut the bulk of these funds. And there is a special fund for the purpose of remediation. So there was potential that maybe jurisdictions could pool their funds to have a broader impact statewide. To the best of my knowledge and to the best of the knowledge of our counsel in this matter, there isn't a unified effort at this time. So I think right now, it's pretty, pretty early on for the expenditure of the funds. But all of us agree that this would be an appropriate use of the funds per the conditions of the settlement.
And Commissioner Hagan, in the future, I would hope that we would be able to draw from the state remediation funds for this, but, you know, I'm kind of covering a gap that we have that. You know, I don't want to start telling people, you know, we don't have these services available, so, you know, that's why I'm coming to you today, so we can keep this going, so the state works out the mix.
So we need a motion to. Okay, do I have a motion for the Grand Forks Public Health seeking the twelve thousand dollars in opioid settlement funds to continue operation of the two programs? Okay. Hagan makes the motion, do I have a second?
Oh, second now.
Commissioner Peach makes the second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign.
Mr. Chair. I'd just like to recognize our executive director who is retiring and to thank her for her service. For her wonderful job in doing an exceptional job as the executive director for all the work during our opioid issues with immunizations and flu shots. I think that Grand Forks Public Health has been run very, very well in the past few years under Debbie's, Debbie's control. They worked on accreditation, the board or the public health has done a wonderful job in getting pieces of legislation passed. In starting nursing programs in our schools, using some of our RF funds to do that. Making sure that, I know at a time when I was on the health board and they were not going to have smoking in liquor establishments. That was just going to shut down every bar and, and saloon in all of Grand Forks County and that didn't happen. I believe it increased the usage at those facilities because of the, the cigarettes and smoking cessation that was taking place in the county. I just think that she deserves a hand for the great job she's done and she would be very, very much, so thank you. And have a wonderful retirement.
Miss the commission meetings twice a month?
Feel free to attend.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Hey. Yes, alright, okay, urgency manager.
Good afternoon, Commissioner Ross, I'm the commissioner, I'm the emergency manager and director for both the city and the county of Grand Forks. And we're here today for a contract renewal that was in your pocket. VOC is our instant management system for all things nasty as well as just, you know, daily planning, also known as MSD, just, just, you know. We carry the contract for this, even though it is a fifty-fifty cost share with the city. We know, sign on it. Your packet, you said addendum. Attorney Lamstead has reviewed this as well as the original contract that we signed to the school. We have an option here for another three years and then with the additional terms for fourth, fourth year and fifth year on there. Which there is, there is a cost increase for that, but this would lock us into that, so if they, if they were good costs, we would be good, but just, yes. Grand has been used pretty extensively, we used it a lot during the spring flood. Next guy's got, got in on it, the public works guys in the city worked with it, they were able to upload photos and stuff just even from their phone. So we had real-time information in the system and then archives and timestamps of everything. So if we need to go back for an audit with FEMA, we have all that information. The other thing we ran into was when you're uploading photos, that takes up a lot of bandwidth. And IT was happy with us trying to email all these photos back and forth. So this way it's pretty easy, we can just put them in the system and anybody that's in the system can look at them. So what I'm asking for today is chair of signature on the contract, so we can renew this as it does expire on thirty one December. Questions, I know you probably have a ton of questions.
Okay, is it in your budget for this?
Yes, sir, it's, it is in my budget.
Okay.
And then it'll hopefully be in my budget again after we go through those questions up here.
Okay. Alright. Do I have a motion then to the chair signature on this application? Okay. I have a motion.
I'll move approval of the amendment number one to our contract, that is a three-year term and then two years of option.
Okay, second?
A second.
Okay. Motion and a second, I'll move in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All same sign?
Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Mr. West, county engineer.
And Austin was a word. Have a line for consideration, you have one that popped up on me today. To ask. Contract, okay. First item for consideration to the contract for the trap we got, this was the one last meeting that I asked for. Signing without looking at it, I guess, and we postponed it to this meeting, so they had a chance to review it. This is the contract for engineering services on Grantford for structures. That would be a hundred percent paid by the DOT federal funding, this particular project does not cost the county any money. It's just a little background, overall, this program, the first round of applications was submitted back in, I think, in June. DOT got a hundred and twenty seven applications for a hundred and fifty two structures statewide. We submitted twelve applications for fifteen structures on August eighth, we were awarded eight, or two, ten, August eighth, we were awarded a grant of ten structures and they divided into two project numbers, same program. The other project numbers would be twenty split, which is normal, federal aid project. So this one, the fact that it's a hundred percent federal funded is a rarity, I've never heard of it before, but that's what we're doing, and this contract would be to hire K O J to perform the engineering environmental permitting survey services for the project, which we went through the R F P process and selection on that as well. I would ask for approval and signatures from our tax finance director as well as chairperson.
Questions from the other commissioners? Sir West, okay, do I have a motion?
I think we're in trouble.
Okay, Commissioner Beach makes a motion to approve, do I have a second? Seconds, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All same sign? Motion's carried, thank you.
And yeah, certificate of local match, even though we don't have one, we still have to list it on the form.
And it's electronic.
Use.
The electronic form.
Correct, oh yes, it's electronic signature.
If he signs first.
I'm sure. What the order is. You know, can you?
There's lots of them.
Yeah. I have a copy, I can look at it and find out, but the local match, we just, if we could use twenty one forty and twenty one fifty, just in case. And just a little tidbit, so bridges, by the way, so when I started nine years ago, we had about seventy two bridges that were either ton limit or had a poor rating of some sort. Last year we were down to about forty, so we've been slowly whittling away at them and gaining ground. And, you know, I've been explaining that they've been re-rating the bridges and going through them, but here I just spent a lot of time, this is the master bad list. Seventy nine, we now have seventy nine bridges that have a ton limit or a poor rating on them. So, yeah, that's sarcasm.
Pretty good money, it's gonna help you with.
Certainly can. We can.
I mean, that comes through the legislature, it sounds like.
Correct. This, we can use prey duck money, what I call prey duck projects. It, every penny has to be put on the ground, it's pavement, bridges, gravel, culverts. We can't buy equipment, we can't pay salaries, we can't do operation things, but it's all projects. It's not flexible, and it's up to us to decide where that goes, and I got a lot of ideas. When the money comes, okay, a lot of places it can go, and you're going to take care of all this. But, yeah, certainly help. There is a second round of grant application, I think I did forward an email on that, I just compiled a list today, I think we're it's up to fifteen bridges I'm going to submit for it, might whittle that down to twelve or thirteen, but hopefully you get a few. So that's due the middle of January. Next item is, I label it the H M G P property, that has a mitigation ground property, that was that bit property we acquired on December sixth. After a little more consideration and going in the house myself, it would be a shame to just final demolish this property. And I have had some interest from the public that, hey, what are you doing with this? So I made a phone call to Barbara in North School of Farm Emergency Services, they reached out to FEMA, to FEMA grant, while auctioning it off, and at least get something for it slash save it, give some family a hole that would be worthwhile. They are agreeable to it.
But it has to be moved, right?
Yes, correct. Well, and it has to be, well, once we took possession of the property, you have ninety days to do the demolition, clean up the property, fill in the foundation. And then we have time after that to restore the property, plant grass, that kind of stuff. So we have till March sixth to get that property out of there, so time is critical. And in order for us to auction off or release, tell me your own property with central code eleven dash twenty seven, so we have to advertise for a minimum of two weeks. And then hold some kind of an auction of some sort, I've never done auction of anything. Yeah. I think I could figure it out, I'm going to need some help with what the terms of that is, but I would ask consideration for permission to auction this property off.
Now, can you, instead of having oral auction at the site, can't you have people submit written bids? Yes, for the property.
What I understand, sealed bids or open auction system?
Yeah. Because I would, I would suggest that you have written that bid submitted, we tried to get out the property, it's like, well, yeah, but.
Well, we can, we haven't filed that road, deliberately left it shut, but yeah.
And we, I believe, we had talked about people being able to take a look at the site one day, one time to see what, what there is there, so.
Yep.
And that would be part of the advertising bid.
Absolutely.
Yep.
Then I, I would ask them to put on a website and our social media page too. Because not a lot of people look at Harold, that might be interesting, correctly.
Yeah.
I would look for a little advice, it's also, maybe some language or it's long stuff. You know, a little, all except legal act, okay.
So you would need approval by the board to allow you to to do that?
Correct.
Yep.
Yes.
Okay, I'll make that motion. Okay, Commissioner Ruston makes a motion that we advertise for bid on that property. Do I have a second? Commissioner Hagan, seconds. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All the same sign? Motion is carried.
Thank you, it's a little tidbit, whatever we do get, ninety three percent goes to FEMA, because they're paying ninety two percent of the project. So we're not going to make much money here, but I do believe it's very easy.
Yeah, it's a territory.
It's a really nice house.
I have more pictures of pictures here. Next item I have would be a purchase of moors. At November one meeting, I got permission to see folks, the moors. Historically, and for decades, we've branded the woods brand more, but our, this man is used to past, we would get quotes from Price Steel Manufacturing, of the nest, of the nest is now Titan machinery, so I, I have also reached out to Butler Machinery to get quotes as well on moors, particularly, I was after the Sholki Moore. We're very, we're familiar with that brand too in the industry, not our department, but very common in the highway industry. Butler also submitted a bid for Ryne Moors. And we're not familiar with that brand. The results of the bids are are right there with the woods being the middle priced option. So I did a bunch of calling around and asking around and nobody currently, not immediately around us anyway, I didn't call every town in the state, but none of our surrounding towns uses Ryne. I'd say the majority, the most common, I would say, is the woods in Sholki, which we're not, or we even anticipate and would be familiar with. Another curveball is, is most counties are mowing like we do. How many counties does, they mow everything, I like to do, but most counties don't mow. The magnitude, we, we do in midsummer, July, August, we'll take one pass on the tops, on the road, we call them a top cut. And then later summer and early fall, we do the bottoms and the backs, and then just before winter, we do another pass on the top. Most counties do not mow the bottoms and the backs out. We've done it, this is what we've done, so, and we have to change that, but another curveball, I guess, would be is that Butler is a dealer, but they currently don't stock parts. Price Steel, we're a wood dealer, they do stock parts. We also do have a spare inventory of parts on hand. We have a couple gearboxes, a couple shafts, a couple stump jumpers, a couple axles, you know, we always keep a few of the main items on hand. So, you know, I mean, usually a lot of times we go with a little bid, I guess in this instance, I would and say it's not the best bid in our case, and I, I know it's a sticky, like it, we've been in some hot water, maybe with that kind of philosophy before, but I would, I would request we go with the woods more again. Now, this wasn't the public bid, because we're under the threshold of that hundred thousand dollar mark, so if we were to buy half million dollar border grader or three hundred fifty thousand dollar border grader, that's a little different story. That would be, you know, add the paper and people could, so I did attach the basic spec sheet that I developed and then copy up the quotes that were sent for your reference.
Questions? If we'd like to make a motion.
Just wanted a little tidbit, I guess technically Ryne doesn't have a spec, they didn't have quite great tire spec, tire size, or the Rocky Maxel tandems. In fairness, it's not that in itself is an ideal breaker. It was a little smaller.
Mr. Chair.
I think I, I agree with Nick, the best on this, and called it out nicely in the document as it turned in, so I move approval of the woods, of course.
Okay, is there a second? Second, second, by Commissioner Ruston, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All same sign?
Thank you. I have one other item for consideration, I just talked about. This last storm was very challenging. On a positive note, our snowboarder, they came here last week, we've ordered some new ones, super heavy duty, they're awesome, we got one last year, so that's great. Haven't gotten them yet, haven't had a chance to go get them. We have a couple of operators out on medical issues. So that has hurt much less keeping equipment going. Tidbit, the new mortar graders are, guys, welcome, all wheel drive mortar graders before we get tandem drive, and they've been solid initiatives. Our trucks are a little challenging. I mean, the new trucks we have, when they work, they're great, they're awesome, what they can do is better than the old trucks, but these new wires and sensors and stuff, when they get all iced out, the weight pulls on those wires and they break. Right, and then some, a lot of times they're easy fixes, but they were down for a couple hours or half a day, and it hasn't really hurt us. But we're slowly modifying equipment and find those weak points, beef them up, and and try and improve them, so hopefully we'll, we'll improve that. Staffing wise, I would like to ask for an emergency, temporary, part time, non benefitted.
No more than seven hundred and twenty hours.
Not more than seven hundred and twenty hours, and I want to bring back a recent retiree that was a great employee, left on good terms, that could operate in with no training and has a C D L. We do have one part time position in our department, but it's a board, non C D L position, no sole plowing training, not the right person to bring back, but we do have a recent retiree that I would like to bring back. Budget wise, I do have a little bit of room to cover this. I got, we have money to cover it, you know, bringing one that I have part time is peanuts in this scheme of things, so I would, and it, it, this is a new position, I don't have one already filled, so I'm asking for special consideration in this case.
Okay, questions? Mr. Beach?
I would move approval of that long, 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 long for a position.
All right. Yeah, do I have a second? Commissioner Hagan.
Mr. Chairman, this position was hurt immediately. And, and we have no anything fake.
How about the end of where? March?
April, May?
Yeah, I see, dude, I see sort of an April, so. Does the individual want to?
Yes. He's asked many times over the years, and then he's been gone for two, three years, he's far and well back. But we really think he knows it now. We're falling snow now like we would usually fall in February, March. This one time, big heavy shot of sixteen, eighteen inches of snow, wet and heavy. You can't go fast and just throw it out, so you're going slower, because sometimes it'll catch the, especially on a gravel road. It'll catch the plow and then just push the plow into the ditch. That Wednesday, well, I think I sent that email, we had seventeen or nineteen plows in the ditch that day, some of them were the ones. So they have to go slow, when you go slow, then you leave a windmill, you leave a windmill, and it's higher on the sides of the road than the middle of the road, so when the wind blows, it just fills in all the ways. Otherwise, when you go fast, you just throw it out and it's like gone, it's kind of disappears out there, or it's way out in the field. And we're shooting ourselves in the foot is what we say in our industry. Let's make it worse, but you have to try and have to get out there and do what you can. And, I mean, we're starting ridding snow already, we've never riddled December. We're going to be blowing in December, we usually don't do that, that's a everywhere, it's March thing. It's gonna be a long, could be a long winter, I hope the faucet sets off.
Okay, got a motion, a second. Prove that position for the highway engineer. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All same sign? Motion's carried.
Yes, can I make a comment to Mr. West? I just wanted to compliment you on the previous grader training that you did last fall. Because I've heard some good comments in my area that the grading is much, much better than it has been in the past. And I think it's just because there's more education being made available to the grader operators. So thank you very much.
You're welcome, absolutely, yes.
That's good news.
That is all, any questions?
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman. We have a ninety two percent general fund cash balance to be reported to only half million of that will be used in the twenty twenty three budget. We lowered our levy. We lowered our levy and use cash. So we'll be using four point five million of that. That will leave us just under ten million dollars or thirty-eight million dollars. Very forward. Allow, the law allows cash carry forward seventy-five percent. Of current appropriations to meet cash requirements. We are currently at ninety percent of revenues collected in the general fund. And eighty-two percent of the budget, budgeted expenditures. In the road fund. We have both the highway and the road. Fund, road fund is the levy, the highway distribution. But it's both, it's included in here. And there is a mistake on the projected cash balance. It's not two point seven million. Two million. Sorry, Nick. And that's because the highway department spent more than budgeted six hundred and sixty thousand dollars and we'll ask. I'll ask for a budget amendment for that. The capital improvements are included in the general fund at two million dollars. We had budgeted. We spent one point five million dollars. Chairman Ross asked if we had twenty-one, our twenty-one thousand five hundred and thirty-six dollars and eighty-six cents for radios for the. And we would add a capital improvements if we could go that route. I just found out today that there's twenty-nine thousand dollars that you guys had approved for the backup generator. We didn't need. Bill took it right out of this budget. So we still have that twenty-nine thousand two. We have about six hundred thousand that is in the general fund that is not shown in the fourteen million dollars projected balance. We do not levy anything for those items, those line items that are in the general fund. The expenses are a hundred percent off at my revenues. We have projected bounds in the parking ramp maintenance of two hundred and forty thousand dollars at the end of this year. That balance is just slightly increased each year. So it's not that we need two hundred and forty thousand dollars on our ramp. It's two hundred and forty thousand dollars since it was built. So. And there is about two hundred thousand dollars in the asset forfeiture and a hundred and forty-five thousand county recorder's tax fund. Now, the county recorder's tech fund for every document that's recorded. Three dollars is collected and put in that county tech fund and the recorder can use it for any. Purpose for their office. They use that tech fund for all expenses in their office other than salaries are paid from that tech fund. In addition, they are able to do upgrades to scanners or copiers or any technology they need. There are other line items too, such as the ground works narcotics task for force. The client opportunity grant. There was an individual that donated a hundred thousand dollars to the social service. It was called social services. Now it's the human service zone. That is in the general fund. But it's not to be used for county purposes in there and they use that money and it's over a hundred thousand dollars that's sitting in there. Talk both the road funds, capital constructions, we have that thirty-three million dollar bond that we just awarded. We received that money in November. So that money is sitting here waiting for our project. There was also a question about. We need additional funds for the parking ramp for the dome. Approximately ten million dollars. And if the three mills that we have left in the capital construction fund would cover that. And it would. I do not have a debt schedule on that yet, but I will get one. And the law allows ten mills for the capital construction fund, but the law also gives us an additional ten mills if we go to go with people. And they approve it and we could get ten more mills. Oh, also in the capital construction fund is three point two eight six million dollars waiting to pay on the. Courthouse, I mean, not the courthouse. Yeah, the one more payment on the courthouse. And the correctional center bonds that will be paid off at twenty twenty-five. So that money is sitting there. We do not levy. For that, but it is sitting there to make the debt service payments. So all the additional levies that are listed here on my budget to actual report. We collect the money that's on the profit tax and we disperse it and that money has to be dispersed by the tenth business date following the closing of the month. So the historical society will collect the money for them and the money gets sent out. We pay the bills for the weed board, the emergency fund, veteran services. Special assessments. And all the other money is dispersed out and they pay their own bills. Indirect costs. For the human service zone are required to be paid by the county. The state considers. All costs associated with providing an office for employees. Building maintenance, liability insurance, office furniture, printers, scanners, copiers, telephone supplies, I T support. Considered an indirect cost and it's a cost of the county. But we do receive revenue from the state. We receive five hundred eighty-one thousand two hundred seventy-nine dollars for indirect costs. And you'll see on this next screen what. We have paid through November in indirect costs for social services. Now, we had budgeted eighty-nine thousand eight hundred dollars and we spent eighty-seven percent of that so far. That's the expense side, but remember the state has given us five hundred eighty-seven, eighty-one thousand dollars for indirect costs. The county fair, we dispersed that money as we collected. So ninety-two percent has been spent out of the hundred thousand dollars that we give to the fair. The insurance reserve, we're over, we're at six hundred twenty-eight thousand. We included or increased for twenty twenty-three, the amount that we have in our. Insurance reserve. To six hundred twenty thousand, but you can see we're still short. On the insurance reserve and we've increased our. Coverage, the dollar amount of our coverage and the value of our assets as well have been increased. Advertising, we're at eighty-three point nine seven percent and that's basically running those minutes. And in the minutes, you'll see that I have every check that is written in and they're quite long, but it's expensive. Correctional center, they're at seventy-nine point four seven percent. Mostly because they can't stay fully staffed. Commissioners, you're at eighty-three point six six percent. Your travel. Is down. Human resources is at eighty-seven point five four percent. Director of administration, that's seventy-six percent. District court charges, we've got seventeen thousand. Five hundred dollars in furniture and equipment line item that we give to. So I anticipate that will be spent by the end of the year. There's also something in there called guardian ad litem. And we have twelve thousand dollars in that line item. It, it's hard, our twelve thousand five hundred. So it's hard to predict when that will be needed. No, it's. The courts charge against an individual that doesn't have a fund. We pay and then we have to collect the money. So I say that one. Yeah. So that's, that's something you can't predict when that's going to happen. So it's under this here. There's something also called sexually dangerous individual.
Mr. Chair members of the commission, the sexually dangerous line item is pertaining to cases that our office prosecutes. It's essentially a civil commitment of an individual that's deemed sexually dangerous under the law. This line item is used to primarily pay the expense of defense counsel, which is an obligation of the county first state statute. This year it is substantially under budget as far as the expenditures. But similar to the district court charges, it's very difficult for us to determine or estimate exactly the number of cases that will be. Coming in any particular year. So. Some years we, we use more of that budget, some years we do not, but it's, it's difficult to. Anticipate with that.
And then we have my department and we're, I'm at eighty-four point eight six percent. I am one staff short as of September first. Don't know exactly when I'm going to have time to hire a person. It's really been busy. And it's difficult to even think about having someone come in because we have, we don't have to be like that person. So soon. After first three years sometime. State attorney is at eighty-three point four. By four percent. The victim witness.
Mr. Chair members of the board, victim witness fee, my understanding is this line item is kind of a pass through. Defendants that are convicted of criminal offenses are assessed. Victim witness fee of twenty-five dollars per case. The clerk of district court collects that fee, routes it to the county fund and then state statute provides certain. Areas where that those funds can be extended specifically to a victim advocacy organization. So I believe the funds that come in. Those funds are routed to C D I C for the services they provide on these cases.
Again, county recorder is at eighty-nine point five nine percent. And if you recall, the only thing this is that they budget for salaries, everything else in their budget is paid by the tech fund. Superintendent of schools. Every county has one. Some part-time position. If paid five hundred and three dollars a month. Spent on that, but you do have to have one. Tax utilization is at eighty-seven point three nine percent. We have two for budgets at eighty-five point zero nine. And I found last week that a bill was code. Coded to their department and it should have been capital improvement. Been left in March and so it occurred after that. So I, I now have discovered it. And taken it out of their budget. It was for the network upgrade that the commission had approved with that back into capital improvements. I don't know if everyone's going to spend that money now that she's found almost forty-two thousand dollars. So. So that may come back up. Employee benefits eighty-seven point eight two, buildings and grounds.
Good question.
Yeah.
Play benefits for which?
So. No, it isn't. It isn't the benefits that you're thinking about. It would be physicals. John fight law enforcement come out of there. Something like that, or it's not overall benefits. Elections. Seventy point seventy percent. He just have, shows that it's over. It's at hundred twenty-five. That's because five quarters were paid for. I have requested that they send the money back. So we automatically generate a bill every quarter. But then they also send the bill. I had two different people that were new in my department. One paid one, we have paid the other. So we've asked for the money back and it, it's come back. And that's the same thing that happened with the county membership. The association of counties bills and both. Last year and the next year will pay in the same. So we'll get that fixed. Attracted services, all the services agreement that you have. See detox center. Safe kids. Are in the add amount. And so we pay them the amount that was approved. Utilities are up and we knew that was going to happen. We're quite to see an increase and we have. And this is only through November. So we've got one more month to go. C O, C O B conference rooms, these rooms up here and the kitchen. That's what the budget is for. Four percent capital improvements, although it shows only thirty-two percent here. We've, you as a board have approved one point five million dollars. So there's still about five hundred thousand dollars that you have not approved. But we haven't paid. So what we're going to amend the twenty twenty-three budget for the things that you approved didn't pay for in twenty twenty-two. But not today. Sheriff is at ninety-three point eight nine percent. So they're on track. And. Human extension eighty-four point zero two, county coroner is a little over. Juror is at seventy-four seven eight. The planning and zoning department at eighty-two point nine four. And miscellaneous is at sixty-five two. So total general fund is at eighty-one point seven. So I think we've done very well. You want to make a motion about that twenty-one thousand. Was it one thousand? Five thirty-six eighty-six for radios for the county coroner to come out of capital improvements. You could do that.
I'd like to explain just a little bit to the other commissioners about that. I got a call from the coroner's office. They've got two new vehicles. And they have no radios. They have no communications with law enforcement or P S A or anybody. So they had asked. Me if I could find out, since it's in my portfolio, how they could get radios and. If there was any like state money or whatever that we would get back. So out of that twenty-one thousand dollars for two mobile radios for the two Dodge pickups and two portables. Once the county pays that bill. The state will refund the county six. Those radios and those are eight hundred truck radios. So. Be set up more or less like caries. So. Commissioner Beach.
Mr. Chair, I would move approval of that expenditure of five hundred twenty-one thousand five hundred thirty-six dollars. The radios for the tortures.
Okay. Go ahead. A second. Chair in seconds. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Oppose same sign. Motion's carried.
Mr. Chairman, for him is I need a motion. For commissioner to approve any bills that come in before the end of the year. I would recommend that the chair. That does that because you are here in town. You could stop over. So anything that needs to get approved, approved before the next commission meeting. I would ask that the chair be appointed to do so.
Any motions, I'll make that one. Okay, Christian Ruston. Ex motion second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign, motion carried.
The next item is budget amendment. So anytime that the budget is expenses, we need a motion to amend the budget. They are listed here and every one of them has offsetting revenue. So if this is the expense side, don't see the revenue side. So the highway defined, I can't say for sure the highway fund had, had the funds available, so they overspent the budget. By six hundred and sixty thousand dollars. Well, five hundred eighty-six thousand five ninety-six oh six, we put six hundred and sixty because we just don't know before the end of the year. Anything will change. FEMA is reimbursed. Historical society, senior citizens, those are. There's, it's really not an expense because it's money we collect, we spend it out. So it's not an expense, like, oh my gosh, no, we've collected more than we had in our budget, now we have to give it out. The COVID fund, there was a COVID fund before ARPA. We spent four thousand five hundred sixteen dollars and ninety-eight cents on it now. So I requested a budget amendment for forty-six hundred dollars. The American Rescue Plan, we spent one.
Forty-six hundred on the COVID one.
Yeah.
Nothing I brought here. The sheet that printed off. Four thousand six hundred. Five hundred, six hundred. Four thousand six hundred.
I think there was only one sheet that.
I see forty-five twenty-three seventy on the one I printed off before.
Yeah, that's, that's an amount that's over and then the amendment I requested an even dollar amount of forty-six.
Forty-six hundred.
Yeah. And the American Rescue Plan, we spent one thousand forty, or one million forty thousand three hundred seventy-seven dollars and one cent. Requested amendment for one million forty-one thousand dollars. The emergency fund. All the money that goes for FEMA is, is our share comes out of the emergency fund. And so we don't know what that's going to be and that's why we need a budget amendment. On fund, the one point seven nine dollars was money that we have. We didn't levy, there was no budget, we have the funds and so now I need a budget amendment for that. The client opportunity fund, remember I told you that person that donated a hundred thousand dollars? And then the human service zone is very careful how they dispersed that money, so they want it to last a long time. So they have spent twelve thousand two hundred thirty-five dollars and seventy-five cents this year. They're over budget by four thousand two hundred thirty-five seventy-five, so we're requesting an amendment of five thousand dollars. Garrison diversion, water resource, or Red River Joint Ambulance, the regional airport, the soil. And the, are, are, we levy for those, we collect the funds. We collected more than we had in our budget and now we need the budget amendment. And then the contract policing, it's totally one hundred percent but offset by revenue. So we're requesting a sixteen thousand dollar amendment. So I request that approve the budget amendment.
I have a motion. Peach, motion second. Again, seconds, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carried.
The last item is every year we have the Grand First County Building Authority and we have to read, file this nonprofit corporation annual report with the secretary of state. We have new members. On the commission and so my request would be that you approve the members of the building authority. And approve the annual report.
Do I have a motion to that effect? A motion, second, Christian Ruston. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign, motion carried. Director of administration.
Chair members of the commission, I just have one item for the board's consideration tonight. It's regarding the new juvenile detention center correctional facility expansion project. It's a change order to the geotechnical surveying work conducted by Teracon. They, when they were out doing the work, they encountered some private utilities, private sewer, water holes, hydrant connection. They, this near the city or the county are aware of it, we identify it. So as a result, they're also concerned about any electrical lines that could be buried that they're not aware of as well. So what they need to do is bring out a specialist who specializes in private utilities to work on this and try to identify who they belong to, what they are, where they are. Estimated cost of the change order would be five thousand dollars. So that would be asking the, the commission to consider and approve that. And that would go towards the law and for the correctional center expansion project.
Questions, please, do I have a motion? Make some motion, second, anybody?
Second.
Seconds, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Thank you. State's attorney. Okay, thank you. Community reports. Commissioner Peach.
The social services zone board met prior to this meeting. Unfortunately, we have one hundred and ninety-one children in foster care. It's hot. So that's not a good thing. Our CPS reports are up to one hundred and ninety-two. There has been quite a bit of delays in getting assistance dollars out because of staff changes and hiring new staff. So they are doing a project called Operation Food for Christmas. Whereas the entire social services, our zone and other zones around us have been working together to get the applications done. Their goal is to try to get all the past due applications up and completed by Friday. So that everybody has dollars on their SNAP cards for Christmas. And I believe as we did yesterday, they were at fifty percent. Mr. Pickett was hoping that by the end of today, they would be at sixty percent. And hopefully they can get all of them up to date by Friday, so that'll be a good thing. They are hiring new staff, they've got five or six new staff, I believe that they are trading in, that's good. And I believe this is the most, since Mr. Pickett started, this has been the most culturally advanced staff that we've had. And as a matter of fact, the word is getting out about good things happening in our county's social services department. And we've even had two employees that their spouse or their partner has come in and applied. So we have two couples that are now working together in social services, which are a good thing. And there was some dollars available in the budget and Mr. Pickett went to the state and asked the state if they could give a bonus, a retaining bonus to staff. And he was able to give the staff that had been there for at least a year twenty-five hundred dollars. And so they have been receiving their checks in the past few days and are very happy with that. And I believe the only person that didn't sign on was a person that knew they were leaving their position to go back to school. So good things are happening also with our interns, the interns now can get paid. And so there are two interns that'll be coming in, one in the spring semester and one in the summer semester. So that's a positive. Things are moving forward, we did have a, a meeting with this head of state department of human services, human health and human services. And our questioning, have a, a series of questions we went through and we will go back to that individual a second time to see if they listened the first time, because we have issues that need to be resolved. So our plan is to do that after the first of the year. So any questions? If things are going well, the fact that we see numbers increasing, some of that is oftentimes teachers are trying to put in CPS reports before the end of the, before the holiday season. So that the families that have needs and issues or concerns about the well-being of children are addressed before there's a two-week holiday.
Where do your interns come from?
Usually the University of North Dakota, oftentimes they're social work students and they may be getting a master's degree or part of their curriculum during their undergraduate degree. And the hope is they'll get to know the social services climate and then hopefully once they graduate, they'll be a potential employee. So it's a good thing.
Commissioner Hagan.
It's a storm last week, not much happened, we had a couple Zoom meetings with respect to the, with our consultants and the mayor's office and so on. That's, that's all.
Okay, as far as I'm concerned, that's other, you've heard about the coroner's office, but other than that, that's, that's about it. All right, so. The two new commissioners, you have nothing to report yet, but. Anyway, okay, so we're gonna move on now to unfinished new business, commission portfolio assignments. Now, did you both get a chance to look at everything? Any problems with any of those assignments at all?
Oh, yeah. First of all, I'd like to apologize for my tiredness. Somehow this little bugger eluded me today at work and so I was scratching, trying to find it, it's like. Don't know a lot about soil, but I'm willing to learn.
Will you build on it? So, okay, anyway, if I could ask the. Mr. Ford, could you get a hold of all these agencies and let them know who their, their new portfolio people will be? Their email addresses and or phone numbers too, is there?
I'll take care of Ridge River Regional Council, I have a meeting tomorrow, so I'll make sure I share that with.
Okay, all right, moving right along.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
In addition, I have the twenty twenty-three commission meeting dates. They are all the first and third Tuesday of the month, except for July. July fourth falls on the first Tuesday, so that's the only day we'll have, our time will have a meeting on a Wednesday, unless you want to change any other date.
We could have it on the fourth and watch the fireworks roll off.
So if you want to make a motion to approve the dates.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve those commissioner dates? Commissioner Ruston makes the motion, second by Commissioner Hagan. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign, motion's carried.
Thank you. And the next item is the county board of equalization. And it's required that it happens within the first ten years in June. And so the date would be fixed twenty twenty-three at four p.m. At the date for the county board of equalization.
Do I have a motion? Commissioner Peach makes a motion. Second by Christian Ruston. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign, motion carried. Correspondence. Okay, do I have a motion to adjourn? I did that for four years. Models in, second.
I can't, I was late.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.